Good evening, everybody. We'll be starting in about three minutes. Just a point of clarification. If there's going to be questions tonight regarding the administrative report on security, you can take a white card with a number. We're going to be answering any questions related to that security presentation with the white number cards right thereafter. So there's no confusion. So the green cards will be any questions besides for the agenda items and the security questions.
Testing, testing.
Soon as Bill's back, we'll get started. Soon as Bill's back, we'll get started.
Here we go. Dr. Hender's here. So good evening, everybody. Welcome to our November 14th Board of Education meeting. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, I'm going to start with a roll call, starting from my left, Mr. Scott Oshrin, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Ms. Laura Newman, Associate Superintendent of Business and Operations, Ms. Dana Schultz, Board Trustee, Dr. Bill Hender, Board Vice President, Dr. Jordan Cox, Superintendent, myself, Steve Hartman, Board President. To my left, Ms. Sue Herman, Board Trustee, Mr. Tim Russo, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction and Assessment, Ms. Mara Harvey, District Counsel, and last, Ms. Debbie Verga, District Clerk. Again, as I, we're going to start with Dr. Cox with the student recognition, but again, just for the point of clarification, if there are questions on tonight's presentation, please take a white card. Thank you. Over to you, Dr. Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our November Board of Education meeting. Before we get started with our administrative report, I'm going to ask Ms. Lippenholtz to come up and recognize one of our students for some of their outstanding work.
Good evening, everyone. Ooh, that's loud. I don't even need a microphone. Most people know that, but, all right. So tonight, we're going to recognize Harold Teller. So Harold, come on up so everyone can see you as I talk all about you. So Mrs. Moore and I collaborated together on this, and Ms. Moore is Harold's school counselor, and she's very upset she could not be here this evening, but she's so excited that you're being honored. So since Harold was young, he's seen a need to help adolescents struggling with mental health. He wanted it to be known that it's okay not to be okay, and that there are resources to help. Starting from a school project, Harold created a way to raise awareness on suicide prevention. He took this assignment and turned it into a reality as he was ambitious to help the community. He started a basketball fundraiser, an organization called Harold's Hoops for Hope, and has since raised fourteen thousand dollars for the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. I'm going to mention just a few of the outstanding achievements and awards that Harold has been recognized for. In March of 2023, Harold had his first basketball three verse three charity event. In 2024, Harold had his second event, now going to become an annual event. This past April, Harold received a visit at Comac High School from the American Foundation of Suicide Prevention Executive Director who presented him with the Community Service Award. He was nominated for the Sports Hero Award for Long Island. He was recognized by Fox News for his nonprofit basketball tournament for suicide prevention. He's done multiple TV interviews. He was recognized by the town of Huntington. He was recognized by Senator Mario Matera and Assemblyman Brown with a proclamation from New York State for his outstanding efforts to raise awareness for suicide prevention. Harold has made it his mission to erase the stigma around mental health and get rid of the barrier that sometimes stops people for asking for help. We have been honored and grateful to have Harold as a student at Comac High School, and he's not going anywhere. He still will last for many years. He has made such a big contribution to our community at the age of only 14, and we can only imagine the amazing things that he will continue to do. As Mario Materia said, Harold is an inspiration. Thank you, Harold, for being a voice in a conversation that can be very hard to have. You're helping to save lives.
So Harold and I recently connected on LinkedIn, so I'm going to give a little plug. Harold's Hoops, Inc. So if you want to follow Harold and some of his amazing accomplishments, he certainly has a presence out there. Good evening, everyone, and congratulations again to Harold. Thank you for being here. Feel free to stay for the remainder of the evening, but I will say if you have work that needs to be done, you are free to go. Oh, you're welcome. So just real quick, we have a couple of items on tonight's agenda for the November Board meeting. We have a couple of community updates. We will be providing a state-of-the-district update on our security, which will include a presentation on armed guards, and we do have a couple of committee reports that we're going to share with you as well. So before we get started, a couple of community updates. I wanted to start with Soccer Under the Stars. And Mr. Rubin, Mr. Malamud, our PR team for being here. These pictures are absolutely outstanding that you're going to see in a short while, but it was just a beautiful night. It was a community event. It certainly helps when your men and women's soccer teams come home with both W's. They both won that evening. But you can see here in some of these pictures, it's more than just the men and women's soccer team playing that evening. It's a true community event. You see, we have some of our youth soccer players that come out that evening and get to play during halftime, and you can see them there with some of the varsity players as well. And it is really sort of like this Friday nights feel, community event. We've had close to 3,000 community members come out for this event. I also want to thank the Comac Youth Soccer League for the last three years. This is the third year we've been doing this event, and every year, they donate the lights for this event. And this is something that we're going to look to try and do an event in the spring. Obviously, we won't ask the Comac Soccer League to provide the lights for a spring sports team, but they've done such a great job, and they've really helped bring our community together. So it's something that we've been working with Mr. Freel to see if we can do, whether it's lacrosse under the stars or something to that effect in the spring, if we can manage that in the schedule. And obviously, I'm here talking about it to the community and to the public, so Mr. Freel, make sure, no pressure. Oops, sorry. Another, another update that I wanted to share with you is we had the pleasure of bringing a group of students to the city to present, high school students to present, and the title of the presentation was Connecting High School Students to Future Professions. And when you're in high school and you think about, you know, if I was asking you, how do you connect high school students to future professions? What do those careers look like? And some may say, careers in high school, you may think about the vocational training. You may think about culinary arts, cosmetology, criminal justice, drone technology, flight science, things of that nature. They're very specific, and those are through our BOSI's programs, and we provide those opportunities every year to our students. However, one of the things that we spoke about with the students that evening in New York City at the New York State School Boards Association Conference was how do our high school students, or how do our students truly make meaning of their learning? And we really narrowed it down when we created this visual for you to three components that we presented on. We presented on, number one, relevant coursework. How are students connecting to their coursework? How do they view math, science, English, social studies, world language, et cetera, to future careers? And our high school staff, our staff in general, have done a phenomenal job taking what the students are learning in math, science, English, social studies, and having them apply it to real-life application. Another way to make that coursework relevant is to cluster it together. So for years, we've had students say they've been interested in different pathways. Let's say maybe they're interested in a health sciences pathway. So we can take the biology, the anatomy and physiology, this college sports medicine, the college health professions courses. These are all courses at the high school that we can cluster together and say to the students, if you take part in these courses, they will help better prepare you for a career in health sciences or in healthcare. And they do take advantage of that. So they're not looking at bio or chemistry as just bio and chemistry. They're looking at it as a destination towards a potential health sciences pathway. They're thinking about their coursework different, and that's what I mean by relevant coursework. Another way that students are able to make meaning of their learning, and when I say make meaning of their learning, it's making meaning of their learning while they're in high school. High school should not be a checklist for something later on in life. It should not be a dress rehearsal for something later on in life. When we hear stories from students that talk about their experiences in high school and how it's helped them decide what future career they would like to pursue after going to college, that's something that is extremely valuable. What's also valuable is when students find out in high school a career that they definitely do not want to pursue before they leave Comac High School, because nobody wants to make that investment in college and then find out that a student's going to have to switch gears. And many have had that experience, but here in Comac, we're looking at things differently. So the way we're able to make meaning of their learning, not only the relevant coursework, but we also have field trips, internships, spoke about the vocational training. Students get to go off campus. They get to go to Huntington Hospital. Students who want to pursue education get to use our own buildings, whether it's in the middle school or the elementary. And I've said it, and I'll say it again, for those that might be hearing this for the first time, some of you may be hearing this for the hundredth time, but some students will go down there and they'll spend 20 seconds in an elementary classroom and say, I never want to be an elementary teacher ever again. Now, some go down there and the light bulb goes off, and they realize this is what I want to do for the rest of my life. They make that decision. That helps them. We help them make that decision before they leave Comac High School, and that's something unique here in Comac. The last piece is something that we've been working on for the last few years, which is creating real-life onsite authentic learning experiences. So we recently opened up a Bloomberg lab, so students are able to go in there, 12th graders even down to 9th graders, to learn about financial literacy. And for those students who really want to pursue careers in business, we can really give them that example or that test drive here in Comac High School before they leave and go to college. Another space that we have is a courtroom. Students who want to pursue law, they have the experience and have been at the high school. Our teachers have taken full advantage of that courtroom, and students are realizing, is this something that I want to pursue, or is this something that I don't want to pursue? And right now, I'm going to say it, but we're in the process of looking to design a space for our School of Medicine. So that's something that we're going to be making some field trips to other schools, universities, seeing what's out there, but we want to create a real-life space for those students who want to pursue careers in health science. So that was a big part of the presentation. The best part were these four students. So these are the ones that came with us, and they each brought their own story, and they did a phenomenal job. They were the hit of that night. So, as I said, 96%, 97% of students leaving Comac High School graduate and go to a college or university. But how does math, science, English, social studies translate to picking a major in college and deciding maybe what you want to do for a career? And those examples that I just gave you, those three parts of that triangle, helped them make meaning of their learning and helped them make that decision before they leave Comac High School. And I'm just so proud of these students. They really did a great job. And here, we have a graduate. So these were all seniors that were able to share their stories in the city. And here, we have a recent graduate, graduate who went through our, one of our programs, and she's going to talk a little bit about her experience at Comac High School and how that translated to her experiences at Sacred Heart University. Do I just press it go?
Hi, everyone. I'm here with Jillian Sostero, one of our former students who graduated last year, and she is attending Sacred Heart University. It's one of the things that we find ourselves in, is trying to make sure that our students are prepared to make the best decision for what they want to do at the high school. And how can we connect students in high school to future careers?
Tell us a little bit about your experience with the health sciences.
All right. So I would say my interest started in my sports medicine class in my sophomore year, and that's where I fell in love with being in the medical field. And I was thinking, you know, maybe I want to go AT or PT. And then I found out about the career pathway program and the fact that I could be getting ahead in this coursework and kind of seeing what I would be enrolled in when I'm in college. And it was in my anatomy and physiology class that I fell in love with being a PA, and that's when I decided that that's what I want to do with the rest of my life.
That's awesome. So did you know for sure that you wanted to go health science, or it wasn't until you started to take some of that coursework?
I had some idea, because it always interested me to be in sports, maybe some form of health science. And then as soon as I started to get involved in the coursework, I was like, oh, my gosh, this is amazing, and I want to do it for the rest of my life.
That's fantastic. So tell me a little bit about your experience. So first year in college, now you're taking some of this coursework in the health sciences. Tell me about the program that you're in at Sacred Heart and some of your, some of your experiences that helped the coursework here in Comac transition to Sacred Heart.
So I'm in a dual-degree program, which means that I'm taking a lot of science classes very, very quickly, and I am currently enrolled in biology and chemistry at the same time. And I took IB biology my senior year of high school, and I am having a very, very smooth sailing throughout this biology course, because IB biology had prepared me not only for the coursework, but also specifically for exam questions. IB is all application-based, and it is exactly what it is like in college. So having the ability to kind of understand what my expectations are ahead of time really, really helps me out in all these classes.
So this is just one example of so many success stories of students that go through Comac High School that, as you heard Jillian talk about, the relevant coursework that she took and how it translated into the experience. And not to mention that the courses that she's taking are all hands-on, project-based learning. They're, you know, it's all application of what they're learning in real-life situation and how much that translates into her college experience. Again, it's just one of many student testimonials that we've heard over the years since we've really started taking this approach of creating these authentic learning experiences for our students at Comac High School. So before we get into the state-of-the-district security, I'm going to talk a little bit about what this presentation is going to look like. In a few moments, I'm going to invite Mr. Palapoli, who's our Director of Facilities, and Mr. Flynn, who is our Security Consultant through Covert. Mr. Palapoli is going to take us through a number of the security enhancements that have taken place over the years. If you're new to Comac School District, you may not have seen all of the enhancements that have taken place, so we felt this is a great opportunity to talk a little bit about what those enhancements look like, going back to about 2018, 2019. After that, we're going to ask Mr. Flynn, we're going to transition into a presentation about armed guards. As our Security Consultant, Mr. Flynn is a wealth of information, so he's going to talk a little bit about armed guards. He's going to answer any questions that the Board of Education may have. And then, once Mr. Flynn is finished, I'm going to take a moment to share a slide on what a potential armed guard model could look like here in Comac. And we will give the community an opportunity to ask questions or just, you know, make statements just in terms of what they hear this evening. So without further ado, I'm going to invite Mr. Palapoli and Mr. Flynn, if you would come up and join us at the podium.
Dr. Cox, real quick, while they're making their way up to the podium there, just two quick things that I don't want to get lost during the previous part of our presentation there. One, you know, Soccer Under the Stars, amazing, amazing night. It keeps, it looks like it's growing year in and year out. A lot of constituents and people ask me all the time, why doesn't the high school field have lights, and what would that look like? So I'm asking permission from the Board to give Dr. Cox permission to just explore what that would look like in terms of cost and timeline and things such as that, so we can have a serious conversation about it that is probably years overdue. I know the technology and lights have changed. It's not as, you know, bright unless they're right under, you're right under them, so I think now might be the time. And after going to that event and seeing, you know, how wonderful it was, I think it's really something that our community could benefit from. As you know, it gets dark early, and a lot of our sports teams, right now, I saw a bunch of parents last week holding lights up at one of the fields so that their kids could get in those last 20 minutes of practice.
Sure, sure. So yeah, if the Board is okay with that, I can certainly do a little bit of research. I have done a little bit of research already, just in terms of the new technology. Obviously, the lights that you saw that Comac Soccer League, you know, donates, a lot of those lights, they look familiar to the ones that you see maybe on Southern State Parkway or Northern State Parkway. They're not exactly the high-technology type of lights, whereas in some places, if you visited, you know, they do have stadium lights that shine directly onto the field. You go behind the bleachers, it's pitch black. They've really come a long way. But I can certainly, if the Board would like me to pursue that, I can look into it and come back, and we can provide a little bit of a presentation to the Board at a future meeting and discuss, you know, what the implications are in terms of cost. And you are right, Mr. Hender, because I speak to Mr. Freel as well, and over the years, we have had a number of contests, especially in the fall with daylight savings. It starts to get dark, and contests end up getting canceled early, which is unfortunate.
I think our soccer playoff games, right, we had to start one at 12 o'clock this year so that we could get both of them in, because we had two successful soccer teams.
We were very fortunate that the district that we were playing against that was willing to come to Comac at 12 o'clock in the afternoon, because the games, both of them, would determine that they had to be played at Comac, and so we had to start one game at 12 and one game a little bit later on, just to make sure that we got it in before darkness. So if the Board wants me to pursue that, I'd be more than willing to look into it.
Yes, certainly being the Board of Maintenance is something we've discussed. Just want to understand the budget, and then also not just the sports, would it be up to the community afterwards and stuff like that? How would that, what would that look like, right, as part of that work, you know? Does it get extended to then the pickleball? Like, how big does this actually branch out to in different phases and stuff like that?
Absolutely.
And whether or not we can use, analyze any of the, if there's any bond money left over or something like that would be a good part of it, so it's not a burden to the taxpayers or as part of the budget for next year.
Absolutely. And the last piece I did have is the students that you put up on the screen before. You know, being in the field of education, I've heard from many different people about what a wonderful job they did in other districts, you know, that saw the presentation and now are constantly asking about some of the things that we are doing in Comac. I was wondering if it would be possible to honor them at our next Board meeting. We'll set up something like we did tonight, and I think that'd be great.
We can certainly do that, and I would say it had nothing to do with us, but because they did such a phenomenal job, there are many districts across Long Island, and Ms. Lippenholtz will agree, that have reached out to us since then that want to come to Comac and figure out ways that they can replicate a lot of what we're doing at our high school in their high school. So we're looking forward to those meetings, which are coming up in the next couple of weeks. So at this point, I'm going to hand the clicker over to Mr. Palapoli, who's going to take you through some of our security enhancements that have occurred over the last couple of years, and then Mr. Flynn will talk a little bit about armed guards, and we'll go from there.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Cox. Mr. Hartman, board members here this evening, administrators, I appreciate you taking the time to hear me this evening. I also have to thank Ms. Paliam's team for helping me put this presentation together. They do a great job, and they're making me look good tonight, so I appreciate that. So let's start off. So we currently have 76 security guards within the district. We also have a Director of Security who is not here this evening. He's working on something currently for us, but he is contracted through Covert Security. Great asset to me, Mr. Brian Frank, great teammate of mine. I really appreciate all his efforts lately. And again, all our guards are state-certified, receive extensive training, CPR training, AED, and stop the bleed. And many of our guards are actually, you know, active and have retired first responders, many with law enforcement backgrounds. So we have a great team of people. I was thinking today a lot about it, and one word comes to mind is just dedication. You know, they're so dedicated, they're thorough, and You know, they're so dedicated, they're thorough, and they care, you know, about the students and staff here. I talk to them every day, and it's a great team we have, and I really appreciate their efforts every day. Some of the duties of the security team, they're ensuring the safety and security of the students, staff members, and anyone visiting Comac schools during or after school of the day. So that's 24/7, seven days a week. So to put that in perspective, we have 1.5 million square feet of structure in the district and 260 acres of real estate. So it's a lot of territory to cover, and they do a great job with it. And again, I constantly speak with them every day, Mr. Frank, our Heads of Security, Building Security Supervisors, they're just so thorough, and again, I can't commend them enough. So on top of that, all the drills they're involved in, and again, this is also with our SRO relations we have. The Security Department and the Suffolk County Police Department collaborate daily, engaging various drills, reviewing safety protocols, and conducting investigations when necessary. And all these drills are always in conjunction with Suffolk County Police Department. And if there's always maybe updates through S.E.D., through state mandates, we're always training, retraining, and going over these drills constantly. Here's a great image of our new enhanced security base. This actually is currently at the high school. So you can see there, those monitors, at any time, security can look at any computer system, or I'm sorry, a security system at any school building. In addition to that, if you see in the bottom screen there, bottom of the picture, there's a door-jar system I'll talk about later on. But what that is, is basically indicates any door within, currently, the middle school or high school, if a door is left open, it actually lets us know right away by a red light you see there or a green light indicating that a door is closed. So I mean, that's a great asset to have in any building. And here is our new and improved high school security booth. This was done during the summer, we did the Bloomberg Lab and also the high school lobby updates. As you can see there, there's a transaction window now. As people enter the building, they go into a person trap, they check in and are vetted with their IDs, given an ID or a badge where around the building, and they cannot enter until they go through that space. So it's a very secure enhancement we've done to the high school. Including with that, all our buildings do have either a visitor window, the primary buildings and Cedar Road. So as you approach the building, you'll see the arrows, the left picture there, there's actually the transaction window. So nobody is able to enter our buildings without going to the window, identify themselves, have an ID scanned, and also someone coming from the building to actually let them in. So nobody can enter without that. And this is included also in the BUR and Somal Intermediate Buildings. We have the same type of system with a person trap and a transaction window. These have been put in place the last couple of years. And now fast forwarding back to my door-jar earlier. So this is a system that we have in place currently at the high school and middle school. We are soon to be adding this to intermediates and primaries as well. Again, it's a great system. I mean, you know, you're sitting in the building, and the security guard has a monitor with the cameras, he has, in the visitor management system, he has this door-jar system there. And at any time, if he sees a door has been opened, the red light indicates that, and either he can radio to another security officer in the building to check it out or a custodian to go look at it. And it's a great system we have in place, and it's another checks and balances we have with the security team right now. Currently, in addition, we did, I think it was in a year or two ago, is added security guards throughout the district. So every building and district actually has a security vehicle on premises that stays there. Now, these vehicles are there 24 hours a day, seven days a week, marked vehicles, and this is district-wide. On top of that, our vehicles are around 24/7, seven days a week. That's in the weekends, evenings, no matter whatever time it is, there's vehicles present everywhere in the district. In my opinion, one of the most important updates we've done, excuse me, is the Rave app. The Rave app is a great tool that we utilize on our phones. It basically uses the Rave app to enhance safety and communication across the school. Rave provides real-time emergency alerts, quick access to emergency response plans, a streamlined communication between staff and local responders, ensuring that the district can quickly and effectively respond to any situation to keep students and staff safe, excuse me. And also, the biggest thing about it is it's actually managed by Suffolk County Police Department, which allows us a permanent, direct connection to law enforcement for emergency situations. So where it's an emergency, true emergency situation, whether it be actually a drill we're doing, or communicating with our administrators over a situation going on in the community and somewhere in the community, there's live updates constantly going on daily with this app. So it's a great tool, I think, we have. And again, this is open to any staff. Anybody can download this, we encourage it. And I'd say a good 80% of them probably have it currently on their phones. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Flynn for armed guard presentation.
Thank God I worked with Elise. She ran technology back when I knew her. So I just wanted to thank Superintendent Administration and the board for providing me a couple of minutes just to give a brief overview. And I think it's important to acknowledge the presentation that Mr. Palapoli just gave because unfortunately, it's an aberration in many districts on Long Island who do not have the multi-layered approach and the long-term, long-term planning that goes into putting such a comprehensive program in place. So I just need to acknowledge that. And it's been a better part of, as I was reminded by Ms. Newman, a better part of 11, 12 years that the process has been in place and taken a real concerted effort and hard look whenever any of these topics have been discussed. So where are we now? We're in a point where, a conversation that many districts, not just across Long Island, but across the country are having, you know, because of, you know, events that continue to have. I just want on the onset to state that, from the position of Covert, we take the same position as the Nassau and Suffolk Police Department when it comes to the conversation of armed guards. We thoroughly believe it's a board, it's a district, it's a community decision. Our piece comes in, and we're thoroughly familiar with the processes, any implementation. And should the district decide to move in this particular direction, would be more than glad to help guide through that process because we do consider it, you know, an enhancement that, in a multi-layered approach to safety and security beyond all other enhancements, needs to have a very detailed and, again, comprehensive look and assessment, you know, prior to moving forward and throughout the entire process. So as I said, this is a conversation that districts continue to have and are having. Many have moved in that direction, others are having the conversation. And, you know, our part has been in it, when I say the numbers, it's staggering to me. 20 years in law enforcement, but almost 20 years in the world of K-12 education. And as I said, doing, you know, having these conversations about K-12 education, you know, a better part of 15 years ago, even 10 years ago, I didn't think that we'd be having this conversation. So we consider it probably one of the most, you know, detailed pieces that have to be looked at. And I want to acknowledge the board because they've taken the time. We get calls all the time from districts after a mass casualty incident, and they'd like something done in the moment, but the board and the administration has taken the better part of a long period of time, asking the very difficult questions. And those questions, I want to thank, you know, Dr. Cox for, you know, for allowing the board to ask those questions, both in public and private. And it's always, I have the caveat, I open up by saying there are a lot of pieces. The district has a district-wide safety plan, which is on the district's website, which is open to the public. Those, that district-wide plan talks about things in a global nature. And then they also have building-level plans that each of the building principals have worked extensively on with their security department and spend a whole lot of time. And the building-level plans are, by New York State Education Law, confidential, and they cannot be divulged, obviously, because they're very detailed. Our position as to a lot of the intricacies as to a potential armed guard program, a lot of those pieces would fall underneath the building-level plan. That being said, as in any of the initiatives, there are overt and covert initiatives, not necessarily a play on words, but what we see in public. Mr. Palapoli talked about your extensive video surveillance platform, your security vestibules. Those are overt initiatives. Same thing, should you go down this road, there are things, obviously, that would be known to the public as far as omnipresence and having potential security personnel on the perimeter. And I'll get back to on the perimeter in a moment. But as I said, embedded in duties and responsibilities, specific how, whys, and wheres, a lot of those questions would fall underneath, or answers would fall underneath the building-level plans. So when we have these presentations, we answer what we can respectfully, ask the administration, the board, and the public to understand that when somebody is prone to commit such an act, it's not a knee-jerk reaction, it's not wake up on a Wednesday morning and say, hey, this is what I'm going to do. It's the better part of six, 12, 18 months of planning that goes in. So we're very careful as far as what goes into our building-level plans, the same thing as what goes into our district-wide plan. So what does it look like? There are the districts that have decided to move in this direction and have, you know, and have discussions and have asked us both in executive and public to have the conversations. Best practices. It's, we have been advising districts on this particular topic right after February 14th, 2018, was, which was Marjorie Stoneman Douglas. Immediately following Parkland, questions came up regarding armed guards. Obviously, across the country, it's handled in different ways. Here on Long Island, there were districts that immediately went in that direction. There were districts that took the time to talk about it, and that's where we are, you know, right now, more and more districts moving in that direction. We looked at it, where we are students, you know, in the company or with students of a lot of these incidents and just the day-to-day. So when something like this is talked about and looked to be put into play, you know, I use the terminology, you know, we always want to maintain the warm and welcoming environment. And what I'm talking about tonight is not, is just generalities as far as what we feel is best practices. And best practices go back to, you know, studying the 476 Marjorie Stoneman Douglas report, the 510-page, you know, Sandy Hook report. And I can go on and on with all of these reports and really digesting how they take place. But ultimately, understanding that, again, we are protecting our most prized assets, and that's the children, and making sure that when both staff and students come to school, that they, again, as I said earlier, enjoy that warm and welcoming environment. Nobody wants to send their child to an armed encampment. So, and again, we're cognizant, we're cognizant of, you know, and who we've surrounded all with, you know, in putting things, putting these decision-making or recommendations in place, are experts in the field, right? I say it all the time, execution level of expertise. And again, as I said earlier, not a knee-jerk reaction, but taking the better part of a number of years to look at, should a district decide to go in this direction, what is the best way to do so with still encompassing some of the topics that I spoke about as far as understanding the K-12 environment? So the question comes up, the question comes up all the time, and, you know, if I wasn't advising the district and going in a certain direction, we get this all the time. You know, I don't want, you know, a question comes up all the time, I don't want firearms in a building with my children. And we wholeheartedly agree. So, you know, that's one of the, you know, one of the caveats that, you know, that we, because we know in those who are involved, whether it be in law enforcement or have that first responder background, understand some of the reasons why. And, you know, I get questioned all the time, you know, about studies from Harvard, studies from Princeton, and this, and, you know, our philosophy, you know, when we speak to districts is, you know, where we come from. We're not, we don't proclaim to be experts in all those studies. What we do, you know, we look at it from one-dimensional. And the one-dimensional aspect is what is the district looking to, trying to accomplish? And that would really be decreasing the response time. And ultimately, that's what it comes down to. So there's a whole host of studies that have been done out there, right, wrong, and different, no matter what side you fall on it. Inevitably, one of them that comes up is the mental health aspect. And that's another thing that we are, from the perspective of where I've seen, you know, the Comac School District, though, that has been a high priority for the district for a long period of time. It's a high priority for Covert. Mental health, the behavioral threat assessment process is something that we have not just advocated for, but strongly implored in both, Mr. Drew Frey was here, and his teammates in the administration and the cabinet here, and then Dr. Frank being here now, both of them have been instructors and are instructors in the behavioral threat assessment process. So all of these things that Mr. Palapoli put up there, the, you know, the security vestibules, the video surveillance, all of these pieces, armed guards, ultimately, they're another layer intertwined with the behavioral threat assessment process. So again, if there was advice to be given as the district, you know, decides, the board decides to go forward and make these decisions, we would advocate or recommend that firearms don't belong in a building, and ultimately, it comes down and says, well, Don, then you're decreasing the response time. I can get into the extreme details of that, but a lot of that stuff would fall into the building-level plans. But if you take a look at, if you take a look at these incidents that have taken place, several of them that I've made mention, most of them failed through the behavioral threat assessment process, and inevitably, most of them, if there was somebody, you know, on the perimeter, they could have been stopped, should have been stopped on the perimeter. Again, accolades, when I look at the photos up there and I look at what the district has done just in the last two years about what their, you know, what they trained, you know, security staff, having the omnipresence on the perimeter, it's a tremendous asset. I would be remiss if I didn't, you know, if I didn't mention, it's a pleasure to, you know, to work and train with the Comac security staff. I think it was only a couple of weeks ago in this room right here where Dr. Frank and we had a conversation, routine training with the security staff. All of that plays into, you know, this conversation right here. So it's a lot deeper conversation, but I think, you know, I think this is, you know, the initial discussion piece. I just wanted to, you know, give the overview and the opportunity for the board to ask any questions. And I know they had some very detailed questions, which would fall underneath the building-level plans, which were and have been asked, there'll be many to come. But we're thoroughly familiar with, you know, with the process for those districts who have implemented in a manner that we feel that because they made that decision, have taken the steps to ensure the safety and security on both ends of it. And I think that's the paramount objective in should a district decide to make this decision. So Dr. Cox and Mr. Hartman at this stage again.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Flynn. I do have one more slide that I'm going to share before we get to questions from the Board of Education, but you gentlemen can sit tight. So at this portion in the presentation, this is where I wanted to share, what could a potential Comac model look like for armed guards, right? And I think when it comes to pros and cons, the pros are response time. The con is training. You know, you want the most highly-trained individuals on your campus if this is a direction that the community is going to support and the board's going to support. So as you can see from the first bullet, guards are highly-trained, and many of them, what we would be looking for is active and prior law enforcement officers. Should we decide to move forward with this process, we would put out an RFP. There are a number of agencies that provide this service. We would design the RFP. Obviously, from the list here, there are certain things that we would expect when we're looking at a potential model. The second one being, where would they be? So the armed guards would be at every Comac school, all nine district buildings, including Cedar Road. We would, we could be looking at two at the high school, two at the middle school, and one at every elementary school. Armed guards would be present during the school day. Their presence will be strict to outside the building. There will be opportunities for them to train in the buildings, which would be made available when the students are not in the building, and the guards would be uniformed. And in terms of their presence on the outside, one of the expectations would be that they're there to do a job. They're there, you know, whether they're at their vehicle, they're outside, their head is on a swivel. You have seen, the parents in this district have seen that some of the most recent enhancements, putting a security car at every elementary school, which didn't exist. That was something that when I used to go to the high school, the middle school, the first thing you see is that security presence right on the perimeter, which is amazing. And then we have now every single one of our buildings with that presence out on the perimeter. This would be an additional presence out on the perimeter. And they wouldn't be expected to be greeters, you know, they're there to do a job. So my expectation would be if they were approached, it would be, you know, they'd be respectful, but, you know, they're on duty and they have a job to do. We also have some of the most amazing security staff working in our district right now, who are ex-law enforcement. So when we do this RFP, we do want to find opportunities for those that are part of our system who would be interested in possibly becoming armed guards, should this be a direction that we move in. that we move in, that there's an avenue for that. Okay? So, um, obviously the training is a big part of that. So again, going back to the beginning where the guards are highly trained, active and prior law enforcement, um, looking at a potential model where they would be, um, they would be at every building. There are some districts where the models, they have them in the car all day. It's very difficult to see the campus if you're in the car. Um, so the expectation would be that would be out of the car with their head on a swivel. Again, regu, uh, present during the regular school day, strict to the outside of the building. There are some cases where you hear where armed guards have to leave the campus to use the, to use the restroom, which somehow defeats the purpose of having them there in the first place. There would be opportunities for them, whether it's, you know, portable restrooms that are located, um, at certain ports of our campus that are not, in my mind, an eyesore, um, but an opportunity for them to be there, um, should they need to use the restroom and then get right back to being on, on duty. Um, so those are some of the options. Obviously more would be discussed, but we're really, at this point, we're curious to hear, you know, if there's any questions from the board specific to a potential armed guards model. And then I know before we start our business portion of the presentation, that there's an opportunity for the community to speak on action items that are part of the agenda because this was part of the agenda, this administrative report, um, members of the public are free to come up and speak their minds at that point too. So at this point, I'm gonna open it up. Questions from the Board of Education.
Sure, I'll go ahead. So again, wanted to start by thanking again, Mr. Parapoli, Mr. Flynn for coming for the presentation. Again, also wanted to thank all the security guards that have been working with us day in and day out, there's some of them here. So again, and as part of the Board of Education, we appreciate everything that you do because not only security, you're security for the students and the staff here day in and day out and they get to know you and appreciate all the hard work that you do and that my kids also felt secure. You know, Mr. Flynn, being here in 12 years, I know that you can see the differences that we've made significantly more than other districts. We never did a knee jerk reaction to anything. We've been very, very targeted and we've been doing safety updates, at least for, you know, at least for the past 10 to 12 years, significant updates, uh, which we keep on wanting to do as part of this. And I do wanna thank the board because I think this, this is the opportunity to, we need to have this conversation regarding armed guards and what's the impact to, you know, what it is going forward because, um, it is time, right, to have this conversation. It is, is, is an apropos time. So I do appreciate the board for allowing us to do that. So again, um, I guess more generally speaking from a more Board of Education standpoint, Dr. Cox, like again, for the purpose of people, and our piece of request for proposals, so what we'd have to do is to send out basically a bid to the people in the public and typically, how long does that take to get all the proposals in? How long would we wait to get all the proposals in if we started that process now? What does that look like?
I would suggest we do it throughout budget development.
Right.
But typically you would want it out on the street for a number of weeks.
Mm-hmm.
A careful calendar.
Right.
And then a, a bid award the earliest I would imagine we could start if the board chose to move in that direction would be, uh, the next school year.
Right, so it would be in the next school year, so this would be, again, for the community, this be part of the budget for next year. So it would be effective July of 2025, so July 1, 2025. So people are gonna ask that question. It'd be part of next year's budget and certainly we wanna make sure the community is aware, again, what it is, what's the budget and certainly we wanna make sure that all that information is transparent to the community as we go forward with that, uh, going forward. Cause, you know, as we said, knowing that the board members in other districts, again, people should be aware that most of the districts around us, I'm aware, Dr. Cox are, have a, have some kind of model currently with armed security. Am I correct in that statement?
Yeah, that is accurate, that many of the districts that are surrounding us have moved towards an armed, armed guard model.
Right, so that's a very important thing for people to realize too, that again, we're being tactical, but at the same time, I think it's about time we do have that conversation going forward. So again, um, just a general question for you, Mr. Flynn, like basically if there's an award to any person out there, what's the typical profile of someone who's a armed security person? We talked about it, but what's, like, I guess people may ask like some of the credentials, what do they have to do? How do they, how do they become an armed security from a very high level perspective?
So I would tell you, um, from what we recommend and, um, best, best practices, I would say this, and, um, for the experts or the people that know, um, you know, uh, police, uh, police are, um, very similar to, like, in the world of education. There are a thousand different things that you can do in the world of education. And the same thing holds, uh, holds true in the world, uh, in the world of police. So the vetting process, um, is, is, is critical. The ask here in, in, in this particular, um, you know, what you're asking this, uh, this individual to do, right, is in that one, in that one in a million to go forward. So first and foremost, um, there is, you know, the, your, your process going forward is to, um, look for, look for the individual, um, that has been an active street smart. Um, I, I get a little bit granular here, but it's, it's a question that has come up from, um, from, from the public, uh, on a number, um, a number of presentations that, that we've done. Somebody, and, and somebody who's been active in the world of, 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 of police can and has in, in their, in their career, um, been able to, um, take a firearm from somebody without having to resort to, to the deadly physical force. So we, we look for people with, um, that type of, uh, that type of, uh, expertise. Those who are, understand, um, what the, uh, what the mission, um, really is, understand the difference between doing this type of work in the K, K-12 environment versus, you know, doing, uh, executive protection for some billionaire somewhere. Again, we're protecting the most prized assets that, that, you know, that we have. So, um, and, and then, and then going forward, you know, um, physically, mentally, um, capable, de-escalation, uh, trained and then, um, be, being able to, um, being able to continue and, and not just retain that level of, of, of training, but continuing to push the envelope, um, you know, on, on a, on a frequent basis to continue to hone their expertise. Um, you know, recently retired law enforcement, active ref, uh, law enforcement who understand active shooter.
Great, thank you. Um, I'll pause for other board members to ask any questions before I have one or two questions of anyone else who'd like to speak, please go ahead.
Sure, I think, uh, you know, before I ask a question, I'll just contribute to the conversation that we're having as a board right now. You know, one and most importantly, uh, the armed guard situation. We know and thank you, Mr. Flynn, for, uh, reminding us that it is that reduction in response time, um, you know, which we know is, is a crucial element. It's not the end all be all, but it is certainly something that statistics have shown is important. So, uh, when we look at the rationale for armed guards, we look at response time, you know, and that's really what it comes down to. My few points of clarification, one, Dr. Cox, I know before, I think it was just a, um, phrase that you used, but you said, um, the guards are highly trained, uh, many of them will be active and prior. I would suggest that in the RFP, it's all of them are active or prior, um, law enforcement experience.
Absolutely.
Um, and, um, you know, in terms of the RFP also, some of the things that I would consider is, um, a termination clause in terms of an employee that, um, you know, good, I've, I've seen things where, you know, guards have fallen asleep or things such as that. Not saying that they would occur to the bid winner in this case, but, um, you know, we would want to have some protection in terms of having that ability should something like that happen, uh, that we do have autonomy to dismiss them and to work with the company to, uh, get that replaced, uh, very quickly. And obviously, um, also, and Mr. Flynn talked about it, the, the de-escalation techniques and ensuring that, um, you know, especially with our younger students, that those de-escalation techniques are, you know, um, there and present. You're correct in saying that they will have a job to do and, uh, their head will be on a swivel. So, you know, I think that's important for the public to understand also that this is not the person that's going to, you know, greet and carry your bags to your car with you. Uh, this is someone who is there doing a very specific job during the day. So while I don't have a question at this moment, those were just some parts I figured I would contribute to the conversation.
Um, I just wanna know, uh, Mr. Flynn, what, what type of arms do the, uh, the guards have?
So, um, I, I would advocate and what, you know, our recommendation is, is that we work very closely in, whatever law enforcement, uh, community that, um, that this deployment would be, in this case, the Suffolk County Police Department. Uh, we advocate that, and, and again, I, I do agree, um, that, you know, only active retired law enforcement, that in the RFP, it's, it's specific to the, um, to the weapon that, uh, that they, um, either retired, uh, with, that, that caliber of a weapon. And I'll just say that in, in almost every agency these days, they're, they're carrying, um, they're carrying nine millimeters, but the handguns, um, so, um, we, we usually recommend lock, step and barrel with your local law enforcement agency. Um, and that also pertains to, um, the ammo that's, uh, that's carried. So we coordinate very closely with, uh, um, with making those recommendations with, with whatever the local law enforcement is. And I would, I would say that, um, should the district, uh, put an RFP together, that, um, some of those pieces be added in there.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, so have you seen anything where implementing this has interfered with the day-to-day operations, instruction, students moving around campus, anything like that?
So I can, I can tell you that, um, if a, um, if a project is put into place and the RFP is a strongly written R, RFP and the winner of that, um, uh, adheres to the RFP, there should be zero, uh, impact on the, uh, the day-to-day, uh, the day-to-day environment, uh, in, in, in the K-12. Um, again, as was said by the, you know, board members and also by Dr. Cox, the RFP's specific duties and responsibilities, those that are overt and those that are covert. We have not seen in, in the districts that we are, um, a, aware of, um, no interaction, no fraternization, you know, those are the, um, key buzzwords that are in that RFP, um, between, and as was specified by Dr. Cox, and fraternization between either staff and, and our, and our students whatsoever. There should be, uh, no impact, um, uh, at all if, if it's executed correctly.
And just to clarify, when in your presentation, Dr. Cox, you said that the guards would be uniformed, that would be uniformed as something from the agency we select. They wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a COMAC, they would have their own individual representation?
Correct, that the RFP would state that the, um, organization who would employ these armed guards would make sure they're uniformed. I think it's really important, especially when, if you're in worst case scenario, and I'm sure Mr. Flynn could probably speak a little bit more about this, that the person who's going to be responding first is gonna be, would be the person who's on campus, but you're still going to have law enforcement responding and it's important for law enforcement probably to identify that individual who's also on your campus and that that relationship is really strong.
A critical point. Um, again, a, and part of it, any, um, comprehensive, uh, training that's put together by any organization that thinks this, uh, through, um, and, and knowing the community that you're working in. Uh, it's no secret, COMAC is a, uh, heavily populated law enforcement community. And, um, so taking that into account, having, um, those, uh, uniformed armed persons, um, readily identifiable, um, not just to the, uh, not just to the staff, but also to the, uh, to the first responders to avoid, um, the terminology that, um, that we refer to as potential blue on blue. Um, it's absolutely, it's absolutely critical and that's why the relationship and the, um, and the, um, meeting prior, um, with the local law enforcement agency regarding the implementation is absolutely critical.
Well, I know, um, you know, cost is specific to the RFP and, uh, what that comes and what that looks like. Dr. Cox, maybe Mrs. Newman, do you have any roundabout ballpark figures in what you think, um, having armed guards at the nine buildings would approximately cost and if that would have any effect on our insurance carriage?
Yeah, so at this point, I think the approximate cost to, um, place a guard at every one of our buildings and with the numbers that I had shared, we're looking at someplace around one point, uh, three to one point five, uh, one and a half million dollars. Is that accurate, Mrs. Newman?
Yes, it is, and we would see an increase in insurance rates.
Which included in that?
Correct.
So there would be an increase in the insurance, um, that we carry?
Yes.
And that would be included in that total amount.
Does the board have any further questions at this time?
No.
Okay. Yes, Dr. Cox, do we wanna continue with the committee reports or do we want to, then we'll quickly allow then, we should allow then the public to ask questions? Is that correct?
Yeah, so the committee reports shouldn't take long, so if you wanted to finish up the administrative report.
Yes, and then we'll let the people start asking their questions.
Sure, so the first committee report is a legislative advocacy committee and we're gonna have, uh, Mr. Hartman, uh, briefly discuss some of the work there.
So again, just to go briefly for the community to understand what this is, the legislative advocacy committee, we're in our seventh year, uh, of what, of a committee that has been brought forth by the board and our main role as part of this committee is working with our legislators on specific matters related, um, to COMAC. And this year, we've, we done our topics this year, um, specific to things that we wanna focus in on. You see some of the topics include education, education sustainability, agriculture, a blue ribbon initiative, facilities, infrastructure, school safety and student well-being. So certainly you could see, this is a student-run group and at the March timeframe, we spoke to both our legislators and with our, um, with the, with the education department as well. So we look forward to, uh, starting the next group up and, uh, reporting back to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. Next up, we have an update on our technology committee and I'm gonna have Ms. Polium provide an update.
Good evening, everyone. A real quick update on this next committee for technology. Um, we are going to be having our first meeting on Wednesday, November 20th at 4:00 PM. I'll be working with, uh, Board Trustee Dana Schultz on this committee. Um, we are having some subcommittees that will be set up and assigned at that first committee meeting, a little bit of getting to know you and talking about the charge of the committee. Uh, you know, if anyone's still interested but has not contacted me or completed the form to be on this committee, you still have the opportunity to do so and our first meeting will be next week on Wednesday, November 20th.
Thank you, Ms. Polium. And last but not least, Mr. Russo, I'm gonna have you provide an update on the multicultural committee.
Sure, so, um, our multicultural committee, uh, beginning last year, has started to shift a little bit away from just being about one multicultural celebration. Uh, a lot of our students have gotten involved and developed the passion for, for being a part of this. So what's happened over, beginning this year, has been that multicultural committee, um, working with Ms. Liscano, our Director of World Languages and Ms. DeRienzo, one of our curriculum associates. They've taken and tried and do some more activities throughout the year. So as you can see up here, they, uh, created some heritage kits, um, for our younger schools, including things like bulletin boards, activities, uh, lit, works of literature that, that they can, that can be read. Um, and that's kind of going, gonna, our plan is to have that go on throughout the year, uh, and have our students kinda take the lead a little bit on that. However, we are still, um, hosting our multicultural festival on April 5th at the COMAC Middle School. And in the coming weeks, we'll be working to, to, um, to work with members of the community once again to help us get that off the ground and, and run that. It's a phenomenal event and we're looking forward to it and, uh, it's continually, continued to grow and having the student involvement at this point has been really, really great and beneficial. Uh, so we're looking forward to a, a great year with that again.
Thank you, Mr. Russo. Um, our next board meeting is in December. It will be a state of the district of math and science. Um, should there be any additional updates or things that are added to the administrative report, when we send out the community invite, we will list that we will be, um, presenting on math and science and if there's anything in addition that we'll be presenting on, it will be shared at that time as well. Um, Mr. Hartman, I'm gonna turn it back over to you.
Great, thank you, Dr. Cox. So at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Hender to read our Board of Education statement. Go ahead, Dr. Hender.
Great, thank you, Mr. Hartman. Our board meeting has two opportunities for public comment, one where the public can comment on specific agenda items only and one at the end of the meeting where the public can comment on other dis, school district matters. Please take a white card if you have a question on specific agenda items and a green card if you have comments during public participation on other school matters. Comments may be no longer than three minutes. The district clerk will call each person up by number. We are monitoring the time and will let speakers know when their time is completed. When called up to the microphone, please state your name and whether you are a district resident. Please only speak to the board directly. The board appreciates the community's feedback. These commentary periods are not times for public debate or for answering specific questions where a direct answer cannot be provided. We will make note of any questions where the answer is not known and provide a response as soon as possible to the person asking the question. Public comment does not allow for positive or negative statements about a specific employee as it relates to his or her job performance. Any matters related to specific students will not be discussed. The president shall terminate the right of any speaker if they are overly lengthy, repetitive, disruptive...
Thank you, Dr. Hender. And again, as noted, we are using the white cards for this time, white cards, and specifically, it's really important this period of time, when you come up to the microphone, please state your name. And again, if we don't have the answer to your question, certainly, you know, Ms. Verga, Dr. Cox, we're all taking notes of the person, and we will get back to you in a timely manner. So, again, if we don't have the answer to answer this time, we will do take note of it, and please note that we're not going to be using this forum for a public debate on specific items. Certainly, it's a public commentary period, and we'll try to answer your questions as best as possible. So, with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Verga to call up the numbers. Go ahead, Ms. Verga.
Okay, again, this is the white card right now, and that would be white card number one.
My name is Heather Gordon. I'm a district resident, and I have a first grader in Northbridge and a seventh grader in middle school. First, I want to say, I don't expect you to necessarily know this information, but I just think that it's something that should be looked into and taken into consideration while we're having these conversations about armed guards, and that is, what is the data on these situations where these tragic events occur, in terms of places where they've had guards on the perimeter versus where they haven't, how the outcomes have been different, and also whether those guards were on the outside or on the inside undercover? Because, in my opinion, that's something that we should consider as a district as well. I don't think that we should only look at one option. I think that if we're going to be moving in the direction of armed guards, which I'm in support of, we should look at it, you know, from every possible angle, and from, to make sure that we have the absolute best plan in place to keep our students and our staff as safe as we possibly can. So, I would be interested to know what that data looks like. And I just also want to say that, I think that, you know, we currently have an absolutely phenomenal security staff. They're amazing. I've seen so many of, you know, things that have happened in my own, you know, personal experiences and observations with them, and I know that so many of them do have very strong law enforcement backgrounds, you know, up to and including being on presidential details. So, I would like to really see them be included in whatever avenue the district takes with regard to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, white card number two.
Thank you. Just state your name.
My name is Steve Sirio. I am a district resident. I spoke about, a year ago, about this topic, and then me and Dr. Cox had a one-on-one meeting where, you know, we didn't really see eye to eye, but I'm really happy to see that you guys are considering hiring covert now for the district. I just had a question. You said that you wanted to poll the community? Like, is that something that, what's the holdup from considering just hiring them? Is that what you said, you wanted to reach out to the community? And if you are going to reach out to the community, is it going to be something that you need to see overwhelming support from the community to move forward, or how would you work that out?
Yeah, you can answer that question.
That's a great question. One thing I want to just make clear is that no decision has been made to go with covert, okay?
Okay, yeah, I'll come.
Because we can't make that decision without sending out an RFP and seeing what other agencies put in.
Okay.
Obviously, when we design the RFP, it's going to be very specific with, you know, what we're looking for and what our expectations are in terms of staffing, et cetera. In terms of polling the community, that would not be something that I would recommend. I've been having a number of these conversations, obviously, we spoke, we, I have spoken with many of the PTA units and community members, community members that I've sat down with my office, that have been asking to have this conversation in public. So, here we are, we're having the conversation in public. It seems that, you know, from what I understand, we had one community member come up, say that they're in favor of it. I have a number of community members that have, you know, reached out to me that said they were in favor of it. This is the opportunity for the community to share their thoughts. Ultimately, it's the board's decision on whether or not to move forward. I think one of the things that we wanted to demonstrate this evening was that this is not a knee-jerk decision. There are a number of security enhancements that we have put in place to get to this point, and some of the conversations that I've had with parents are, you know, next year, we're adding a security car at every single building. This year, we're adding doorjar sensors at every single secondary building. We have in the plans to add them for every single primary and intermediate. So, there has been a progression. I would say at this point, our progression in terms of security enhancements has now risen to the level to have this conversation.
Great. Do you know, is there going to be a timeframe where you're going to look for everyone from the board's decision on this to move forward?
I don't have an estimated timeframe. I think the board has to listen to the community, then digest all of that information. This is something that clearly, there's a timeframe in terms of sending out an RFP and during our budget process. As much as we've basically just started the year, we've already started budget planning for next year, for '25, '26. So, clearly, that means that this conversation is going to have to take place in the near future, of whether or not it's going to be included in the budget.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
White card number three.
Thank you. How are you? Good.
Good evening. I'm Melissa Rose. I've been living in COMAC for 42 years. I have two kids in middle school. Dr. Cox, I want to thank you for the meeting that we had at the end of last year. I appreciate the presentation tonight was very informative. I don't really have any questions, but, you know, I've heard you say that it's important that the community shows support and that is in favor for this, so that's why I'm here, just saying that I'm in favor of it. I wish it happened last year, but, you know, I'm glad that you're entertaining the conversation this year, and I think it's really important, obviously, for the safety of our children, teachers, staff in our buildings, so just thank you for doing this, and I look forward to hopefully implementing this next year. Thank you.
White card number four.
I can just state your name. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kim Wilde. I am a parent. I have two middle schoolers. First off, I want to thank Dr. Cox for meeting with me a few times over the past several years about this. I've always spent, spent many emails to the board regarding this. So, I don't really have any questions. I appreciate the conversations that are happening. I appreciate the presentation, but in my opinion, it's years late. This conversation has been happening for way too long. So, I'm just going to read some statements that I have. So, we are one of the last districts in this area to have armed guards. Hop Dog was the first. In 2019, their board voted unanimously for armed guards shortly after the Parkland shooting. After the Uvalde shooting in '22, South Huntington's board voted unanimously for armed guards. And in addition to those, Kings Park, Elwood, Smithtown, Half Hollows all have armed guards, including many others around Long Island. William Floyd's BOE recently voted unanimously for metal detectors when a student went with a loaded gun. So, these security measures at the doors are great and all, but a lot of it is inside, okay? The shooting in Georgia that happened recently, they also had a school ID system in place called Sentijix, I don't know if I'm saying that right, where all of the employees wore this badge, and you'd press a button, and it would alert the others. So, it's a step up from this rave system. So, I would encourage you to look into that as well. So, I appreciate all these conversations, but, you know, since Hop Hogs, and I know back when the superintendent before you, and I forgot his name, there was a lot of security meetings regarding this as well. This Security Connectors Group was put into place. It's been six years of conversation, and it just needs to happen. So, thank you.
Thank you.
White card number five. Number six. White card number seven.
Hi, my name is Katie Bifulco. I'm a district resident. My son Marco just started Indian Hollow for kindergarten, and my little baby Vincenzo is three, and he'll be starting soon. So, first, I'd like to thank Dr. Cox, I'd like to thank the board. This is core in my soul right now. So, I have two comments, and I have two questions. We protect our court buildings. We protect libraries in the city with armed guards. Protect my babies. Your cost was $1.3 million that it would cost. My children's lives are worth more than $1.3 million. And think of the lawsuit that I would have against your school district if something happened to my children. $1.3 million across nine security guards, I did the math very quickly, is $144,444 in annual salary, which breaks down 180 school days, eight-hour shifts, it's $100 an hour. I'm sure that number is grossly exaggerated, I'm sure we can bring it down. In addition, when we were talking about bathroom breaks, why isn't there an option to add a floater? Add, you know, the middle school's going to have two guards, the high school's going to have two guards, why can't we add a floater to support the intermediary and primary schools? This way, somebody can go take lunch, or somebody could go, you know, to the, we have to go potty, to go to the bathroom. So, just wanted to kind of throw that out there as well. Also, too, for the armed guards, it's not a shoot-to-kill situation, it's a shoot-to-disable. If somebody's going at the school, it does not mean they're going to get shot and murdered. It means that they're going to disable the assailant going into the school, whether it's shooting them in the leg, shooting them in the butt, I don't care where you shoot them, keep my baby safe. So, it's not a shoot-to-kill situation, and I think a lot of people were nervous about that, but it's a shoot-to-disable. And it's also a deterrent. If somebody knows there's an armed guard at the building, they're less likely to go up in there. Like Don said, who I happen to know professionally as well, his company's amazing, but it's also a deterrent. If they know we have armed guards, they're not coming. They're going to find a district that's open. They're doing this to make a statement, and if they know that we're protecting our children, and there's a chance they're going to get shot in the leg or killed, they're not coming here. So, that's kind of just what I had. But thank you so much, and obviously, I'm for this.
Katie, I missed your last name.
Bifulco, B-I-F-U-L-C-O.
Thank you very much. And just a point of clarification, so you know, that did include the insurance. So, that's not just the salaries, it's the insurance on top of the district. I'm just telling you, money's not an issue. I'm just letting you know that we're not.
Mr. Hartman, my son's life is worth more than $1.3 million.
No, 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 we're not arguing. No, no. Yeah, I'm not debating, I just want to make sure it's clear.
Yeah, no, I know, but I just, I just broke down the math correctly. I think, I think it's well worth it. I mean, if you're retired law enforcement, or whatever it is, you're protecting our children, you're taking a serious responsibility, they deserve to be paid accordingly.
Yeah. Yes, I apologize, I'm not debating you, I'm in favor of it as well. I'm just letting you know that, for the public to know that, we're not paying the security guards $100,000 a year. That's what, that's what I'm clarifying.
$144,444.
Yeah.
But it's worth it.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Go ahead.
White card number eight.
Thank you very much. Just state your name.
Hi, my name is Victoria Cardinelli. I have two children in elementary school. Thank you, Dr. Cox and the board, for your enhancements that you've made over the last number of years. I know I'm not an unfamiliar face here, so thank you for all of that, and thank you for having this discussion in more of an open forum than we've been able to have previously. I would just like to let the community know, talking about cost and the safety of our children, last year, our school budget was $227 million. So, at $1.5 million, you're talking .66% of our total budget that this would cost to protect our children, and I think that's well worth it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last one.
Are there any other white cards?
Does anyone else wish to speak before we move on with our regular agenda? Okay. Thank you very much for all your, you know, discussions. Again, as Dr. Cox said, there will be future updates and future board meetings on, as we continue through this process, and certainly, the key crux will be at the budget meetings, which are in the March timeframe. So, please continue to give us your input and feedback. So, I'm going to continue with the agenda, onto item G, which is to acknowledge the correspondences as listed in the agenda. The next part, I see the motion to adopt the following donations. Okay, one for the Burr Intermediate School, and another one for the Sawmill Intermediate School, both from the PTA. Could I get a motion, please? Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? Again, I'd like to thank the PTA for their generous donations to both Burr and Sawmill. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the October 10th, 2024 Board of Education meeting? Can I get a motion?
Motion.
May I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the personnel agenda as listed? Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, for the, just for the public to know, there are three people here who are getting tenure this evening, if you wouldn't mind standing, so it can be appreciated. If you're here tonight to get tenure, please stand up, it'd be appreciated. Congratulations. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda items listed as presented, or amended, two through 14? Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Can I get a, okay, excuse me, I'm going to acknowledge receipt of the August 2024 and the September 2024 financial reports as listed below. It's just, yeah, we're good for this one, yeah, it's my fault. I'm going to acknowledge receipt of the Internal Claim Monitor's monthly update. Yep. And I'm going to acknowledge receipt of the Special Services rendered by Bond, Shonkin, King for the statement ending September 30th, 2024. I'm going to acknowledge receipt of the Committee on Special Education and Preschool Education with the dates as listed. Okay. The Board of Education, the COMAC Union Free School District, shall hold its regular meeting on Thursday, December 19th, 2024, at 6:30 p.m. at the HUBS Administration Building, 480 Clay Pitts Road, East Northport, New York. It is anticipated the board will make a motion for the purposes of a journey into executive session at this time, and at 8:00 p.m., the board will reconvene in public session for the purpose of holding its regular meeting. Now, I'm going to turn it back to Ms. Verga for comments from the public on matters pertaining to the district.
Okay, and these are for the green cards. Green card number one. Green card number two. Green card number three. Green, thank you, green card number four. Please state your name. Why not? Okay. Someone took them.
My name is Gus Huber. I'm a COMAC resident. Prepared some comments for you guys. So, when I first ran for the board, I did so out of frustration and distrust with the COMAC Board of Education and the then-superintendent Donald James. There was a lack of transparency, there was a lack of honesty, there was a disrespect and a disregard for community members who asked questions at board meetings, or just seeking information or the truth. So, now, as a community member, no longer board member, I'm once again growing concerned about how this board is operating. Recently, you decided not to fill the Board of Ed seat, a decision that affected me personally, and it was one that was made behind closed doors, absent of any public conversation, without any knowledge as to how each of you weighed in on the issue. So, if this was a decision made by the board, I'd like to know where I could find that in minutes or on record, to see how each of you.
Now, I'm going to turn it back to Ms. Berger for comments from the public on matters pertaining to the district.
Okay, and these are for the green cards. Green card number one. Green card number two. Green card number three. Green, thank you. Green card number four. Please state your name. Why not? Okay. Someone took them.
My name is Gus Huber. I'm a Comac resident. Prepared some comments for you guys. So when I first ran for the board, I did so out of frustration and distrust for the Comac Board of Education. And the then superintendent, Donald James. There was a lack of transparency. There was a lack of honesty. There was a disrespect and a disregard for community members who ask questions at board meetings or just seeking information or the truth. So now, as a community member, no longer board member, I'm once again growing concerned about how this board is operating. Recently, you decided not to fill a Board of Ed seat, a decision that affected me personally. And it was one that was made behind closed doors, absent of any public conversation, without any knowledge as to how each of you weighed in on the issue. So if this was a decision made by the board, I'd like to know where I could find that in, in minutes or on record. To see how each of you weighed in on that process. I don't need an answer. Several weeks ago, I was at a community gathering, and I was asked about Comac's stance on a state's regional plan, regionalization plan. As they had heard that many districts on Long Island were communicating their opposition to the New York State, and they shared this with their communities. So I sent an email to the four of you and Dr. Cox. I was inquiring about the very important topic. Not one Board of Ed member replied. It's rude. It's unacceptable, and basically, it's not becoming of an elected official. Dr. Cox did reply, so I appreciate that very comprehensively, as a matter of fact. And sent out a communication a few days after that, alerting the community about this initiative. So again, thank you. Several days later, Newsday wrote a comprehensive article about the topic citing twenty-seven to thirty districts who have expressed their opposition to the plan. There was no mention of Comac. I was told that we were waiting to be better informed. So I asked, how is it that many other districts are better informed than us, than this board? So I think it's important that we hear from our board members on this topic. Another topic we're, we're hearing about in the news, but not from Comac, is the status of the sexual abuse cases in our district related to New York Child Victims Act. How many are there? How many are settled? How many are still pending? What's the cost to the district? Where's the money coming from? What budget line? Where's the earmark? Again, other districts are forthcoming. Why isn't Comac? So I'm here tonight to express my concern about the way the Comac School District might be in violation of public meeting laws. For those who don't know, open meeting law is designed to prevent Board of Ed members from privately debating and deciding matters behind closed doors, and that they are required to debate and decide in open and public forums. So perhaps a review of the New York State Board, School Boards Association rules for the use of the executive session is in order. One of your board goals was, in two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, was basically improving communication. So I do look forward to this board sharing and discussing these topics and many others during the open meetings as per, as the year progresses.
Green card number five. Thank you.
I'm not a public speaker, but on behalf of all the nurses, we want to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Cox, for all of your support. We really appreciate it, more than you'll know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other green cards?
Are we done with the green cards? Okay. Just so the public to know, we're going to be entering back into executive session, but I do want to pause for a minute because, again, one of the speakers in public, as similar to last time, made comments which I do find incorrect. So I want to make sure that the public is aware, again, we have made statements regarding regionalization. Our public speaker basically has gone through Dr. Cox, who's been our speaker, basically what's been going on. So we'd like him to basically let the public know what's gone to in regionalization, and so we want to make sure the public is aware that, yes, we are informed, but yes, there is, there is a process going on. And basically, a lot of people do what I call knee-jerk reactions. Anytime the state does something, first thing to do is say, no, we disagree. Flatter me against it. We need to basically listen to the state of what's going on. Again, the people need to understand that the state is looking for a better fiscal model for districts going forward. That's part of this plan for people to understand. It's not to penalize the school districts. It's not to centralize the districts. It's basically looking for, how can we have more Comac models out there, people? That's what they're looking for. We are the shining star. They call us out as the shining star, and they want to figure out ways for how we could have more districts similar to Comac, which is something that we should be looking at going forward, that we are the example for a lot of these districts going forward. But I would like to have Dr. Cox go ahead and bring the district update regarding regionalization and our initiatives, that what's been going on.
Sure. Just, just for transparency, we did create a website on, a webpage on the district website that provides an update on regionalization. It has all the communications that I have sent out. It also has the regionalization PowerPoint presentation that was conducted by state ed officials. In addition, I would say one of the most important aspects of this part of the website or this webpage is when they updated the frequently asked questions. So when it comes to, you know, our active participation in this regionalization. One of the things that, that they wanted school districts to do, and I just recently met with Regent Tillis yesterday, who shared that last year, when the governor decided to single-handedly change the foundation aid formula, there were a number of school districts that were impacted. I mean, some school districts on Long Island were going to lose like eight million dollars, which would decimate their programs. That was the result of the governor removing what's called a save harmless clause, which would guarantee that you weren't going to get any less foundation aid than you did the previous year. When she took that out, school districts were taking huge hits to their state aid. The legislature had an issue with that. They advocated, they put the save harmless clause back in. Those school districts received that money. But clearly, she was, I would say, firing across everybody's bow, letting them know that I did this last year. Be aware that this type of funding might not be coming in the future. So what the state decided to do, and let's just be clear, the state doesn't always roll out things in the best format. And when they rolled this out, this was not rolled out in the best format at all. And Mr. Regent Tillis even admitted that. However, hearing from them time and time again is that they really want school districts to have conversations at the local level about how they can create operational efficiencies. So if there are some of these districts who were going to lose close to eight million dollars last year, Comac was not one of them. We are not a save harmless school. So as, as much as we didn't get the bump that we saw in the previous year, we still got a little bit of a bump in state aid. But we didn't take the hit like many of the other districts had taken, which would have decimated their programs. So the state is trying to get districts to talk. I'll give an example of Out East. So if Out East, which my brother happens to be a principal, it's very difficult to try and hire a point-two world language teacher for one school that's going to travel all the way out to the far end of the south fork of Long Island. But if there are other districts could benefit from, say, a world language teacher where you need point-two, we need point-two, you need point-two, and they can come up with a one-point-oh and share it, and everybody can pitch in, and that's some type of shared service that comes out of this, and that could be a benefit to some of those districts. And I reference, again, the frequently asked questions, because when the state posted the frequently asked questions, some of the very important questions were, do school districts have to participate? We have to participate in what's called the strengths and needs survey, which we're going to send to the, the state, which is due December sixth, which is really, in my mind, a brag sheet about Comac. Just in terms of needs, I will share with you that one of the areas that we will advocate for is an increase in special education funding. If you look at the foundation aid formula, when we're looking at a general ed student, and we're getting, just say, for example, arguments sake, one-point-oh for a general ed student, we're getting about one-point-four, right, Mrs. Newman, for a special education student, but it costs three times that amount in what we're receiving. So it would be a great opportunity to advocate to the state to really consider looking at school districts who have a higher special education population, and maybe funding them a little bit differently. That could potentially be a benefit. But in the end, we fill out that strength and need survey. When the BOCs puts together this regionalization plan and decides to send it to the state, if we do not agree with any of the activities that are in there, we do not have to participate, and we do not have to sign off on it. One of the other concerns was also, community members concerned about our tax dollars going to be spent on students from other districts to educate them, because we have these pinnacle programs, and maybe other school districts don't have, say, the level of advanced coursework that Comac has. So will we be required to educate students from outside of Comac? They clearly stated in their FAQ that the only students that you are responsible for spending your resources on are the ones who reside within your community. So that was made very clear. So as far as the process goes, we will go through with filling out the strength and need survey, and we will submit that on December sixth. But if we go along and we have these conversations, and we feel that Comac is in a place where we do not feel we need to participate in these district, these activities that would be part of the regionalization plan, we would maybe not choose to participate in this. So that's sort of where we're at with the regionalization plan. Obviously, what I will share was when it comes to the State Education Department, there's always a healthy skepticism. And that's what I, I will, I will share that we have. You know, we're not going to go into this blind. We will trust, but verify. And if there is any potential implications, negative implications for Comac, you can be sure that we will address them. I will also share that one of Comac's strengths are the relationships that we have formed with our local legislators, our senators, and our assemblymen, who have most recently sent letters to the state, basically also firing across their bow to the state and the governor, saying, we're watching. And if anything seems to go awry, we will step in. So having those relationships with some of our local legislators is critically important, because they are very powerful in terms of advocating, because they do help control the purse strings up in, up in Albany. So that's where we're at with regionalization. Under the community tab, if you open that up on the webpage, there is a section called regionalization. If you click on that, I strongly suggest, you know, you read what's on the face of that page, but I strongly suggest you click on the frequently asked questions, which will certainly help answer a lot of the questions that you may have.
Thank you on that. Two other points of interest, and I just want to give some feedback. Yes, Ms. Berger, this just is make sure that every correspondence that goes out is acknowledged by the board to somebody going forward. So that is, I want to make sure that because that's an important thing, again, that everyone is notified, they're acknowledged as part of the correspondence. But we will make sure that every correspondence has a personal email that goes back to the person, even if Dr. Cox is doing it. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. The other thing I wanted to ask is to Ms. Harvey, again, regarding any kind of CVA cases, again, letting the public know those child victim acts cases are discussed as part of executive session. Recovered as part of executive session, and basically, any kind of discussion of settlement are discussed there, that they're not discussed in the public. Am I correct on that, on that discussion part?
That is. That is correct. The board could not discuss settlement options out in public. Otherwise, you're basically telling the plaintiff exactly where we are, so that would take away really the ability to settle a case. If the other side knew, okay, well, you're authorized to say, give one million dollars. Traditionally, when you're negotiating with settlement, you're not necessarily going out with your, your best offer first. You always hope that the other side, you know, bites before you get to where you, you know, want to be. So it would not be appropriate to discuss any kind of settlement in public.
Right. And the other thing I want to discuss, Ms. Harvey, is that in terms of the person to, for the selection of the, of the board seat, we are not required to take any kind of vote as part of public action to decide on how to best fill that seat.
So by the board not taking any vote, that means it's, by not taking action, no action has been taken. So, you know, there, there still could be a time where the board comes and says, okay, let's have a discussion about what we want to do. It doesn't mean that a decision has been made. It means no action has been taken.
Right. And as I mentioned during the last meeting, the board did meet with three candidates back in the August or September timeframe. The board could not come to a conclusion on which was the best candidate at that time. So we decided, as we discussed during the last board meeting, to leave that seat open and not to go forward with that part of that work. And that did not be part of discussion. That was just, basically, as Ms. Harvey said, the lack of discussion, basically, of any go-forward plan was where we were at. So there was no vote taken and nothing required, as that seat is still open. That seat will be filled as part of the next election, this upcoming May of two thousand twenty-five. The person who wins that election seat immediately takes the seat upon the day of the election, as well, for the public to know.
And it does follow our past practice and precedent that we have done in the previously, and it does give the community the right to their democratic vote.
That's correct.
And since the, the person who caused the vacancy, their seat is up July, the person who gets that seat will really have a three years and like month and a week.
Yeah, six-week term, six weeks on top of that, yes. So again, as Dr. Sanders said, we do have a lot of past practice regarding open seats, which we had back in the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen timeframe, where the decision was made to keep that open. So I do want to appreciate that people do, that we are very, an open and honest and transparent board, that we do appreciate you come to us anytime with any kind of questions or concerns. We're at PTA meetings, we're in the community, all out in that. So if you do need to reach out to us, please, you know, our cell phone numbers, you can reach out to us anytime. So please be aware of that. So with that, I'm going to conclude the meeting to go back into executive session at nine forty-five for the purposes of discussing issues involving a special education student. Can I get a motion, please? Can I get a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone. Have a happy Thanksgiving all, and we'll see you in December.